Now seven PM and I am reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, October 21st, 2024. Michelle, will you please call the rule?
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Jane.
Here.
Ms. Demme.
Present.
Ms. Fosdick.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Mr. Carrubus.
Here.
And Ms. Gents.
Here.
We have a quorum. Ms. Gents, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, we made it. It is now seven PM and I'm calling to order the public hearing for the application for the waiver modification of school code mandate section of 105 ILCS five dash ten dash nineteen dot oh five, school improvement days for school years 2026, 2027 through twenty twenty, 2030 through 2031. It's a lot. Do you want to make any comments?
So we have, Dr. Nicole Howard is available.
I'm assuming this public comment is not about that topic.
This would be, so if Dr. Howard is able to answer any questions, I think there was maybe one question regarding, this is about school improvement days and how we are going to use them going forward. Very similar to what we've done in the last several years.
So I need a motion in a second to close the public hearing.
I had a question.
You did? Okay.
I did. I just wondered, I just asked if we could understand exactly what's changing, what the difference is. So this is actually a renewal application, so there are no changes. We've been operating in this way for at least, I think, eight years now, if not more, and it just allows us to have two full in-service days instead of the four half-days that are currently in the statute. Thank you.
Sure. Do you have a comment? Okay.
If there's any other school code mandates that we can waive or modify, I encourage the district to apply.
Okay. I need a motion in a second to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second. Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please call the rule?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demme.
Aye.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Mr. Carrubus.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes. The motion passes. We have one board salute. Ms. Fosdick? Oh, sorry, Ms. Gents.
That's all right. I snatched it. Mattia Valley Senior achieves rank of Eagle Scout. The board salutes Mattia Valley Senior George Corellis for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest advancement rank in scouting. For his Eagle Scout project, George constructed two community benches for the Forest Preserve District of DuPage County. Congratulations to George on achieving this prestigious rank of Eagle Scout.
Let's all give him applause. It's quite an accomplishment, so thank you. Okay, it is now time for public comment and sixty minutes is allowed. Each person is limited to three minutes. Oh, sorry. I'm like way ahead of myself today. Okay, we will now have our student representative report by Soha Pancho from Mattia Valley High School. Soha.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Soha Pancho and I'm the executive board representative for Mattia Valley High School. First, I would like to start off with general updates. Twenty-one hundred students attended our homecoming dance on the twelfth. This week, we will host NMSQT and Student Support Day on Wednesday. Next, athletics. Boys and girls golf finished their season with representation from three of our athletes at sectionals. Girls volleyball along with Nequa Valley held our annual Dig Pink event raising awareness for breast cancer this past Wednesday. Boys soccer placed seventh in sectionals, girls volleyball placed third in sectionals and are prepping for the IHSA State Series. Lastly, fine arts. Our theater department hosted the children's play Beauty is a Beast. The fall choir concert was a huge success and we hosted our first ever Student Shadow Day during which nine staff members shadowed students. That's all for our board report this evening. Thank you all for your time and I look forward to updating you all on Mattia Valley's future. And as always, go, go Mustangs.
Thank you, Soha. All right, now it is time for public comment. Sixty minutes is allowed and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents, so we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. We have one speaker tonight. It's Theodore Marin.
Hello, President Donnie, Vice President Dunning, members of the board. My name is Theodore Marin. I'm a, I'm a parent of a student who attends, excuse me, Owen Elementary. And as you all are aware, we were put in a situation to where we're forced to talk about a topic that us as parents do not know how to approach. I had, I had a very nice conversation with the principal this morning and what seemed to be lacking and what I addressed the most was, she stated that you all and the faculty and staff like had a few meetings regarding how to speak of it with the children and how to approach it with other staff members' families, but I asked her, what about the parents? And she said, unfortunately, we didn't because I was, I'm looking for resources myself about how to approach it. And it's unfortunate that I'm being forced into it without having the proper, without having the best and most correct way to do what's best for my daughter and how to be respectful about it. And also, you know, she, she was very respectful when talking to me and very nice and answered all my questions, but it's just unfortunate, like I said, to be caught off guard with such little notice about it. And I just want to make it clear that I respect the decision that that person's making, but I just don't respect the fact that we're being forced into it without having the proper resources. And yes, to make it also clear, like every parent's going to have their own opinion about the subject, right? And without any resources, that's the only thing the child's going to know is how their parent taught them, whether it's negative or positive. So to have something or some, some sort of outlet or resource to help us better teach them about what's happening, what's going on, would be very much appreciated. And also, other options for parents to, to look at if necessary, like if, I'm not saying personally because I'm comfortable with my daughter staying at the school, but if parents who weren't, if they had options to do whatever else they need to do to get past this hurdle. But I just wanted to voice my opinion on that and I'll let you all know how I feel about it and how, and how important it means to me to have something to go off of rather than just Googling it or asking opinions of other parents because I don't think that's the right way. I could tell my daughter how I feel about it now, but I don't know if that's the right way or not. So, but I appreciate all your time. Thank you for letting me speak and I look forward to hearing back.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We will start with the superintendent report. Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education and Indian Prairie Community. Yesterday was the annual Naperville Half Marathon 5K Race. Team IPF was out in full force with runners running to raise money for the Indian Prairie Education Foundation. It was a beautiful day yesterday for the, for the run or walk, depending on your speed. Thanks to the cheer squads that were present cheering on the participants. Money raised supports various activities, including the Young Hearts for Life program that screen high school students for any heart conditions, Fine Arts Festival that our larger community enjoys each year. If you donated, thank you. If you have not, you can always donate by going to the IPF website. I am truly sorry I missed the event due to illness. However, I know it was a lot of fun for all who were involved. Some people even had personal vests. Won't say who. I thank all of you who ran, who were there cheering on the runners, and for all of you who helped to set up the event. It is a major undertaking and IPF is to be committed for the work. The average age of Indian Prairie schools is now over thirty years old. Like any house or property, the facilities are at an age where there is a need of reinvestment. Many building systems, including roofs, boilers, HVAC, and electrical system are original and passed through expected useful life. The November 2024 bond referendum includes funding to address current and anticipated infrastructure needs at all of our district facilities. It will address these needs without impacting current operating funds, ensuring the district can upgrade facilities without impacting classroom instruction. Additional reinvestment, additionally, reinvesting in district facilities will lower energy costs and reduce repair and maintenance expenses. These savings will create additional funding for continued operation and educational needs. We have a short video we'd like to show and talk about our infrastructure, so please, let's go to the video. For those at home, we will get to the video momentarily.
The average age of the district's facilities is now over thirty years old. And while this creates some challenges with district infrastructure, it also creates challenges within the classroom and learning environments that our teachers and students are in on a regular basis.
Right now, we're at Hill Middle School. This is the oldest middle school in the district. And one of the challenges we have is the narrowness of our hallways and stairways. So we're in one of our stairways right here. You can see that the stairway, it's really challenging to have students both coming up and down at the same time. This creates challenges for students to arrive to their class on time and safely. We're the upper gym of Hill Middle School, where the roof is still an original roof to the building, about forty years old. This roof leaks. It creates warping and distortions on the gym floor. I believe we're at a crossroads right now. Several other neighboring schools and other districts that I visit are making upgrades to their facilities, to their infrastructure that our district has not been able to do. It's more of just trying to tread water. We are working in a building that is needing some real improvements and things put in so that they can keep up with the ever-demanding changes that students need to be successful. This room speaks to the educational needs at Wobonzi Valley High School. We have TVs still hung on the corner of rooms. We have chalkboards. And in this room, these are old science rooms that we've converted to core math rooms, and we have not been able to take out the science tables and the science storage.
This mechanical room underneath the pool, through chemical erosion and time, needs to be addressed, or we'll be at risk of losing this space for our students in our community.
Schools are the heart of a community and this is the moment for a safer, stronger 204 as we continue to provide opportunities and services for the future families that are going to be a part of this district for the next fifty years.
Thank you. I'll now turn it back to Ms. Donahue.
We'll now move to our consent agenda items. I need a motion for the approval of consent agenda items D through G.
I move that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items D through G as presented. I second.
Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please call the rule?
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Carrubus.
Yes.
Ms. Demme.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
And Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
The motion passes.
I want to make the next motion.
Next, we move to our action items. I need a motion in second to approve the application for renewal of the waiver modification of school code mandate section of 105 ILCS five ten dash nineteen dot oh five, school improvement days for school years 2026, 2027 through 2030 to 2031 as presented.
I'll make that motion. I don't think we need to read it again.
No? There is a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please call the rule?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Mr. Carrubus.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
And Ms. Demme.
Aye.
The motion passes. I need a motion in a second to approve a resolution recognizing October 2024 as National Principals Month as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution to recognize October 2024 as National Principals Month as presented.
I second.
Are you going to read it?
So every October, it is National Principals Month. Principals play an important role in our education of our students. They are the instructional leaders in the school. And so this is the proclamation. It reads as follows. Whereas school principals play an integral role in nurturing a positive student-centered culture in elementary, middle, and high school across the state of Illinois, and whereas school principals are responsible for attracting and retaining the best teachers and support staff to ensure that each child receives equitable educational opportunities and services to reach their potential. And whereas it is the primary responsibility of the state of Illinois to provide adequate and equitable resources for schools so that all students have access to a quality education and foundation for a successful future, and whereas the Illinois Principal Association, which represents over six thousand, six hundred educational leaders statewide, believes that educators' experiences and voices are essential to crafting effective education policies, and whereas school leaders face many obstacles in supporting and educating our young people, and it is through their perseverance, passion, and hope-filled leadership that Illinois continues to produce quality, career-ready students. And whereas we must continue to encourage, support, and recognize our school principals who have a positive impact on Illinois students and the educational systems in the land of Lincoln, therefore, I, J.B. Pritzker, Governor of the State of Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of October 20th through the 26th, 2024, as Principals Week, and Friday, October 25th, 2024, as Principal Day in Illinois, to recognize Principals and the Illinois Principal Association for all they, that they do to help our children learn and succeed.
Any discussion? Mr. Rising, did you have something? Okay. I, I just want to add that principals are, you know, a backbone of our community and our schools, and I think we're all greatly appreciative of all of the work and effort that they put into our district every single day, every single evening, every single moment of their lives. So thank you to all of them. So, Michelle, will you please call the rule?
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Carrubus.
Yes.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Ms. Demme.
Aye.
The motion passes. All right, next we will have a presentation from Mike Purcell, Brian Giavini, Grant Sarr, regarding new high school course proposals.
Good evening, Board of Education. Thank you for allowing us some time to share with you some exciting work that this group and, and our building leaders and teachers have been working on and want to share with you in advance of course selection for the twenty-five, twenty-six school years, all happening very fast. So this presentation is in line with Board Policy 640, Curriculum Development, and Alliance with Strategic Plan Priority Number One, particularly Objective Two, which talks about providing all students with high-quality curriculum instruction to meet or exceed standards and demonstrate greater-than-predicted growth on standardized assessments. We are here to propose to the board five new courses to enter into the high school course guide for, for this winter, which would be then implemented, most of them. You'll hear about one that's a little different for next school year. So the five of them are listed here: Criminal Law, World History Through Media, Construction Two, Sports Medicine Two, and Adaptive Art. Just to kind of renorm this conversation, we haven't talked about this for a while. These are, these courses are prioritized by, by our team in collaboration with the building leadership, including department chairs and assistant principals for curriculum instruction. These are all connected to the five-year, five-year curriculum plan that was developed and then shared again this past summer. Dr. Lee had shared that with the board, I think, in a June update. And then for all of these, rather than saying it five times, teachers from each of the three high schools were involved in the development of these proposals. All of these priorities are, they align to state standards and mandates that this promotes alignment between the schools, that they really are focused on achievement, and they're aligned to the board goals, including the strategic plan and the equity plan. So really, excited to bring these to you today. Wanted to speak, speak on each of them, and then we'll come to any questions as we kind of get wrapped up. This, this cycle really kind of talks about how we address these. We'll talk about how we review the needs and then design and develop these classes. We'll be looking for implementation for next year and then that process is always a circular piece, right? So we think we can do a really good job, but there's some things that we need to improve on, so we'll come back and, and renew that cycle as we go. So the first of these classes is the criminal law class. If you recall, I was able to share with you some exciting changes we made in social studies and told you that time, there's more to come, right? So here, here we are. And that started with, just to remind you of some changes to the freshman sequence, right? We moved to human geography and AP Human Geography for all freshmen, brought a lot of really positive results. The human geography class has been really well-received and allows us to really get at those two things that we, that we highlighted as priorities, one being the equity plan and making sure that we're really looking at culture-responsive instruction in those areas. And then two, being the great and growing state mandates. Unfortunately, Mr. Carrubus, we can't opt out of all of them. So, so it really gives us a delivery system for those. And a priority for us, as, as you may recall, as we were talking about those classes, is there are a large number of those, and they're all important in their way. It's an Indian Prairie priority from our team that those are delivered in graduation requirement classes, right? That they're not just things that we tuck away in an elective that maybe twelve kids take at Mattia Valley or twenty-five kids take at Nequa. This is something that if it's, if it's a mandate, that all of our kids are going to do it. So, so that was a big part of that review. What came with that also was a real need, we talked about this at the time, for some electives in the social studies area that were not at the AP level, right? We have a lot of honors and AP-level courses that, but not as many for kids that can access based on interest and regardless of their sort of level of preparedness. So, so, so we, we did a big dive and we did a survey of both students and teachers and took both of those data points and compared that to where were some of the holes in our coursebook and came to these two classes we're going to share with you tonight. First is criminal law. I won't bore you by reading through the course description. Certainly, you likely have done that already. Really, generally a criminal law class, criminal justice system from kind of arrest to the courtroom. And, and this class really would look at these four units of study: crime scene investigation, criminal trial, criminal justice in the prison, and a research-based inquiry project. Really looking for an area of passion that a student might have probably in those three units that they talked about, dig into it a little bit, kind of write a letter, kind of propose a law, whatever that might be in, in that student's case. Both this class and the one that follows will be one semester elective classes open to students after completion, successful completion of our grade-nine human geography classes. So they would come after that. So this criminal law, we really feel like will appeal to a broad section of our kids. Some students who are looking for another social studies class that have an interest in this area as a nice elective, some students who look at the pathway of either, either legal studies or law enforcement as a potential career, and this would give them a leg up in that area. So we're really excited to, to bring in this criminal law course. And again, it's been developed in conjunction with teachers from each of our high schools. The second we're bringing to you for your review tonight is History of the World Through Media. Those changes that, that came out left us in a place where we really needed a little more college prep level, a non-AP level, history in our curriculum. There was just, there was a hole there. And, and our kids told us that too, like, hey, I kind of want to see some of that stuff, but I just don't have an opportunity. So really, we're very excited that this, the way this course is coming together, the, the media is sort of the hook, but the, the history is the meat, right? And, and we're looking at a variety of things, both film, TV, graphic novels, other media, looking at, you know, historical-based podcasts and all those kinds of things. So, so very, so really excited about two pieces. One, the equity kind of pieces of this, right? To be able to see the world through different lenses and different periods and different groups. And then the second piece is, is the media literacy part, really looking at how are things portrayed and looking at that with a critical lens to say, hey, you know, like the, you know, the Hamilton story is like it's like, you know, the winner tells the story, right? So, how is history portrayed and how does it, how did it really happen? And maybe looking at different versions and trying to parse out the truth. So, we're very excited about this class. Again, a one semester class, we think it'll appeal to a variety of kids, and we had students telling us that it would. And we really see that the place where we'll see a lot of attraction to this class is we have a group of students who finish our ninth-grade Human Geography class and are not quite ready to take our US History class. It's a, you know, it's a junior-level class, some of our students take it as sophomores, but need another year of both just personal development, right, and then academic development. And this class will be able to really hone in on those historical skills, that claim, evidence, and reasoning skills, and build up that skill bank for them to be more ready for that US History and then the government class that comes behind it. So, we're really excited about that on both of those fronts. Those are the, these are the units that'll be included in there. I kind of finished fast. There we go.
Within a CTE area of this course, the why behind it is each year we bring together a team of admin and teachers to really look at our CTE pathways as part of our Perkins compliance. And part of that work is really looking at our pathways within the CTE to make sure that we're providing courses that are of high interest to students, but also, in addition to that, making sure that we're providing courses that prepare our students for the next stage of their lives, whether it's college or career. Within this specific one, this has taken a deeper dive into really our construction/architecture pathway. We found that we had a little bit of duplication within the architecture side, and this would be a capstone course in building off our Intro to Construction One course for this capstone experience for our students. Some additional whys, what we're seeing is an increased demand for skilled trades within our area and the nation. As we see additional people retiring, we're now seeing fewer people entering the skilled trades. We're also seeing increased enrollment for our similar courses at our high schools, Intro to Construction and Woods Courses. And each of our high schools have seen an increase in our TCD enrollment for the past three to four years. As a quick reminder, TCD is Technology Center of DuPage, that is our area career center. School districts from across the county can send students to TCD for capstone CTE courses in a number of different program areas, including construction, but others as well. This course is a little bit unique, as Mike mentioned earlier. This is actually a request for 26, 27. The reason why we're bringing it here today is so that we do have a grant cycle of Perkins CTI to get some of the materials and supplies that we would need to run this course within our schools. We want to make sure that we have Board approval before we start investing in that course. Some additional things that we'd be looking for in this course is a continuation of Intro to Construction One. So, in that course, they build the exterior of our home. Construction Two would be looking at the interior of the home, so they'd use those foundations that they've done in Intro to Construction in this semester course, now looking at the interior side of electrical, plumbing, carpentry, finishing walls, and other things for the interior parts of some of the things that you would do within skilled trades.
So, back in 2020, we were very excited to offer Sports Medicine, then called Athletic Training at the time, and this was an effort to expand the scope of physical education instruction beyond our traditional sports-based health and wellness curriculum. Since that time, we've seen consistent and growing enrollment, actually doubling over the course of five years in that particular course offering. So, these enrollment trends, in combination with the ever-growing workforce shortages in allied healthcare professions, have prompted us to forward Sports Medicine Two for your consideration. This course will be designed to build on the practical knowledge and skills students attain in Sports Medicine One while also placing an emphasis on career exploration. So, recent workplace survey data tells us that 85% of healthcare facilities are experiencing shortages of allied healthcare professionals. While Athletic Training will remain to be at the core of this course offering, we feel this course will offer a meaningful opportunity for students to more broadly explore allied healthcare professions such as physical therapy, kinesiotherapy, and occupational therapy, to name just a few. Units of study will also continue to develop students' knowledge and skills by applying course concepts to more complex medical scenarios focusing on injury prevention and injury management. We'll also be seeking out opportunities for field observation in collaboration with medical professionals. So, we're very eager to build on the success of Sports Medicine One and forward Sports Medicine Two for your consideration. Also this evening, we're offering a peer-partner's Adaptive Art course. This course is designed to mirror our existing peer-partner classes in physical education and family and consumer sciences. Through an application process, students will be selected to collaboratively partner with students from our Special Education Department, and the primary goal of this course is to provide opportunities for self-expression through artistic creation. The instructors and the students will work together to find the most effective and fulfilling processes in the art-making experience, and this will be accommodated through adaptations to the environment, tools, and processes in order to fully engage in the art-making. Additionally, the planning and preparation and teaching components of this course will provide a venue for our peer-partner students to experience the world of education and introduce them to our Grow Your Own initiative. The structure of the course will be designed around the seven elements of art which you see in the left column, and the media may include drawing, painting, sculpture, textile, fiber art, and digital arts. It's our hope that this course will provide an arts-based peer-partner opportunity in which students create a sense of community, allowing all students the comfort and freedom to explore artistic expression. So, I'll turn it over to Mike to talk about next steps.
Thanks, Grant. So, very excited to bring these to you tonight. Our next step would be to come back at the next meeting, the November 4th meeting, and ask for your consideration for the approval. This lines up with our course selection timeline. We're actually meeting with the Department Chairs on Friday to start getting the book together, put that in combination with this conversation and development for the coursebook that we publish typically around Thanksgiving, so kids and families can start making some decisions in early January. So, you know, following approval for whatever you deem worthy, we would certainly go with continued ongoing professional development, purchasing, collaboration, and those things. So, this time, we'd like to open it up to the Board for questions about any or all of these classes.
Thank you. Ms. Demming, do you have questions?
Really appreciate seeing some of the opportunities for additional coursework, especially on the, that legal side, really exciting for our students. Can you share with me a little bit about, a little bit more about the DuPage County Career Center?
Absolutely. Is there anything specific, just kind of general overview?
Can you, if you could tell me, I just wasn't as familiar. I had asked a question about CTE and specifically some personnel that I've heard interested in cosmetology. I had no idea really that we're doing that. So, can you share a little bit about what that center is? Many of the public may not. I see that we have 119 students who've been enrolled, so the broader spectrum may not be as aware, and how do students indicate that they're interested in being able to take courses at this particular center?
Yeah, so, a quick overview, TCD, as I mentioned, is the career center. They offer a number of different programs across the county for our students to enroll in. Our students go in the morning, other school districts send their students in the afternoon, and some school districts split to make sure that there's an even split. We are one of the farther school districts from TCD. Some of the school districts are right in their back door, so they have easy access to it. But TCD offers programs from construction to cosmetology to nursing, CNA programs, welding, criminal justice, EMT programs. A lot of the programs have dual credit attached to them, in addition to, some of them have certifications where they walk out and can have jobs directly related to that profession that they're entering. Our students come from all three of our high schools to attend. Some of our high schools have really strong attendance, and we're all actually maxing out a bus at this time for our students to enroll in all those programs. Our highest one off the top of my head, I believe, is Cosmetology, around 30 students, followed by Nursing Assistant Program, which is 20, and then Welding is our third-highest enrolled course for this year. Yes, transportation leaves in the morning. Upon arrival, students can ride the bus to our schools, and then we provide transportation from their homeschool to TCD, and then around 10:15, 10:30, depending on the day, then they'll come back to their home schools, have a quick lunch, and then they'll go off to the sixth, seventh, and eighth period, which is generally English, PE, and one other course.
So, I understand our student ambassadors do not have any questions or comments about the coursework. Is that correct? Would you like to come up and, yeah, yeah. Yeah, over here.
So, first I want to say that I love all of these courses. They're so engaging. I know personally I'm taking Sports Med next semester, and I would love to take Sports Med Two the next year, and especially when it comes to Criminal Law, again, a great course. I know a lot of my friends are taking Business Law this year.
I would say one of my main questions is, I would say one of my main questions is about the World History Through Media, because I know my freshman year, I know they don't offer regular and honors World anymore, but my freshman year, I took AP World, and through AP World, a lot of the subjects that you covered in the World History Through Media were already naturally integrated into the course, and I know that was the same for honors World and regular Worlds for my friends who were taking it. So, I want to know maybe why we, like, took those courses away from freshmen and we only offer human now, but we're now offering World for these sophomores.
Yeah, great question. Right, so, we went back and relooked at that and had some decisions to make, and there was a couple pieces that kind of brought us to where we were. One was, there are a good number of state mandates in terms of things that we have to teach all kids, right? And having a delivery system to do that, lining those courses up for the, having a geography experience that includes, you know, the religious pieces in there, right, and the things around genocide and things like that, which are in the AP Human and the human class, were really important to us, right? So, the other piece was, we really wanted to have a World History class, World History offering, very similar to what you said, I think you said it really well. We wanted to be open to all kids, right, that you didn't have to be an honors or AP kid to take a World History class, right? So, this was sort of part of the long-range plan, but trying to make all those changes at the same time is just really hard, right? So, it took us a couple of years. I think we're doing the right work. So, the work was, we wanted to have, we liked that we have an AP World class, and now we have a World History class that anybody who's interested in World History can take. You don't have to be kind of reading at an honors level, which if you took that class as a freshman, you know that's part of, that was part of the work, right? So, we're really excited about this piece, being able to bring World History to any student who is interested in doing it.
Okay. So, one more, like, follow-up on that. My understanding is you're trying to motivate children to take World History, which I agree is such an important class, I loved it. So, to, by first taking human, then Worlds, then AP US History.
So, the graduation requirements are the ninth grade, either one of the geography classes, right? And then, to take a US History class, whether that be US History or American Society or AP US History, any of those meet that graduation requirement. And then, to take a government class, which can be either a regular government or AP US Government or AP Government and Politics, right? Any of those meet that graduation requirement. So, I think the nice part about our social sciences classes is that you can kind of move in and out of the honors and AP track, and a lot of students do that. So, I think it gives students a lot of options, right? So, that sophomore year, there's, you can, students can take AP World or AP Euro or the courses we're proposing tonight. There really wasn't a great offering. We've been doing a US Geography class for a while. There's a Military History class, those are some good options, but I think these are really round out that, those offerings for students that maybe aren't interested or aren't ready to take a college-level class as a 10th grader, right?
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that cleared up my question.
Thank you so much.
Do you have anything? Okay, thank you.
Another alternative that we were, like, discussing in our little corner over there was that we could maybe expand some of the courses we already have to be available for more grades. So, for example, something like Psychology or Sociology, our social studies classes, we could try and expand them to, instead of grades 11 to 12, maybe like grades 10 to 12, and see how that works. So, that was just the only thing that I wanted to add on.
Thank you. Yeah, definitely worth looking into.
Okay, okay. Yeah, thank you.
I'm afraid to touch my mic. Uh-oh. Is it doing it again?
All right, I'll try not to do anything and stay far away, because we all know I'm loud enough. Oh, did you guys hear that?
Over here, do you have any questions?
Oh, all right, perfect.
Okay, is this on? Yeah, okay. So, in your slideshow, I noticed that you were talking about a five-year curriculum plan, a strategic plan, and an equity plan. Can you please give me, like, a brief overview of what those three are?
There's not a brief, I can give you a brief of that, yeah. A strategic plan is something that is shared with the public. Certainly, Dr. Howard and I can get you some copies of these things to review, and we can go through them with you, but that really is a guiding document for all the tenors of the district work, right? So, both curriculum and achievement, right, human resources, finances, and sort of our community relations, right? So, this presentation night was really focused on that first tenor, right, the achievement and academics. Our Equity Plan really ties in with our Strategic Plan, really talks about really looking at empowering students, right, an inclusive environment, right, making sure that we're welcoming and those pieces, right? So, having students see themselves in our curriculum, right, and then be able to take the perspective of others as well. So, those are the big tenets of that. Our five-year curriculum plan is something that came out of Strategic Plan, was essentially to have a plan to do this kind of work, when we're going to come in and do some new proposals or to redo classes that we've had in the past, sort of what is the cycle of that? It's important for a couple of reasons. One, there's a lot to do, right? As you know, there's a lot of classes at the high school especially, right? So, we've got to have a kind of a plan, a kind of a long-term plan to get all of that done. And then, we also need to budget, because all of those things, every time we do one of these, it costs a little bit of money, right, both in teacher time and resources to support the classes, right? So, we need a budget, have a plan so we can have a budget, right? So, those are, those are the three big pieces that kind of came out of that.
Okay. And one more question. You put on a lot of slides that they were like surveys going out to teachers and students in order to get feedback to, like, create these new courses. In terms of the students, what does it look like for the survey? Is it just like a five-minute, like, Google form or something?
Yeah.
Okay. So, well, what I'm asking is, it's like, are you like... So, well, what I'm asking is it's like, are you like giving students like a couple of different options and are like, what do you think about them? Or is it more like the students coming up with their own sorts of ideas for courses? Just like off the top of their head?
Yes, and so it was done, this, so this has been in development for a while. So this was done about 18 months ago now, the survey of both students and staff. And it was a listing of about nine courses that we were kind of considering and asked, asked students to sort of figure it was rank or to kind of say, I'd be really likely to take it or I'd be very unlikely to take it, right? Those kinds of things. And then it had an open-ended section at the bottom that allowed for students to just give some free response, right? Maybe something that didn't show up in the, kind of forced choice, that they could, we could put some selections in there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, thank you. I have to say you guys had excellent questions and made excellent points. Thank you. I, I love this presentation. I always find these so interesting and exciting because I love to see how we're trying to reach every student and let them have these courses that they're passionate about. Especially adding more skilled trades. As we all know, that's something I feel like, you know, lately has become essential. Like you were saying, we have so many people now retiring, not enough people being hired again. One of the only questions I had was as far as the social studies courses specifically really, will there be an AP or honors option ever? Or is it really just going to be, you know, completely open to everybody? Not really needing, you know, to take an AP course before or?
Yeah, great question. So there already is an AP, we have an offering for AP World History and an offering for AP European History. So we already have both of those in the book. So this is a non.
So this will be a non-AP honors option.
Right, so for kids that aren't ready or aren't interested, that they can have something that's at a different, different level.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. You know, human geography is a wonderful course, AP and regular. But I do understand some kids might need a little bit of a break after that for the sophomore year. And then, yeah, so really there's just no grade requirements or anything. Is this something that then the teachers will be recommending possibly? Because I do know sometimes, especially with the AP courses, they kind of just automatically recommend AP again?
So, yes.
For the next year?
So these are elective classes, so they're, so they'll, students coming out of ninth grade, they'll have some conversations of typically it'll be, are you, do you, are you kind of ready or kind of wanting to be taking US history or is they're looking for some different options? So list off a couple of different options that they could take to stay in the social studies realm. But these, at the end of the day, are electives like any other elective. So a little bit more free student choice than kind of recommending into like what level of English you're going to take next year, right?
Okay, yeah, no, I love that. Thank you. Honestly, yeah, those were my only questions. Thank you guys so much.
Mr. Krubas.
Just really a comment. Thanks for all the work you're doing and all that are involved with this. The, from my perspective, seeing it on like a decade-long scale, it's great to see the traction that we're getting now with the five-year plan. I feel like we're really able to make some of these courses our own and be involved with our teachers and students on this. I recall a time where we were being reactive to state mandates and limited by our resources. So it's refreshing that we are on our own path now and we have the resources to do it. It would be nice to accelerate some of these things, have additional staff and to afford the materials and the capacity internally to do it. But I'm, it's fortunate, I'm starting to see the momentum, so I appreciate that. Thanks.
Ms. Fostick.
Thank you for your continued work, making sure our students have a variety of options to choose from. I'm especially excited about the peer partners adaptive art class. Because in, in my opinion, and I would imagine in the opinion of the teachers teaching that class is teaching much more than art and expression. And that collaborative team building that's happening in that classroom. So I'm thrilled that we have a peer partners option for the fine arts. Thank you.
Mr. Rising.
Yeah, just a request and a few comments. I know Dr. Lee gave us kind of an update on the five-year curriculum plan. If possible, maybe Dr. Tally could get it to us or whatever. I would just like to see a, like a half-year update, like maybe in December timeframe, just kind of an update of where we are or if we're still on the same track. And, you know, I mean, I'm sure you guys are maintaining it. So if you could just let us just take a peek and see where you're at or if things have progressed or slowed down or whatever, just so we could kind of purview that. That's my request. So a comment. Totally excited about all these offerings, like kind of much like the students. I, I wish I could take all these classes, they're so exciting. Much like Ms. Fostick, I'm very impressed that we are, have a focus on trades or maybe that was Ms. Kent's. There's a daughter that's in healthcare. I'm excited that we're focusing on that more and take, kind of taking the next step in both trades and healthcare. Equally excited, you know, my daughter was a peer partner leader, so I'm very excited about that adaptive art. I actually was, had the honor of attending a seniors' presentation to the principal at Matia and about at least a half dozen staff members last year that made a proposal to staff to have a peer partners theater arts class. And I, I'll tell you what, this student laid it out perfectly. They were a peer partner leader and they were involved in the, in the theater arts. Ali Shamanis, who has since gone on and she's going to be a teacher. But, you know, I would love to see us even expand some of the peer partner offerings. You know, as long as there's no staffing that's required or additional. Because I know, you know, we're limited there. But, you know, I would, I would like to see, even see us expand that, the peer partners offerings as well. And then just a final comment. I'll, I'll probably be ringing you up, Mr. Purcell, and coming in, taking some of, a look at some of these curriculum offerings. I'd love to just kind of take a peek at some of the world history ones and that type of thing. Oh, and by the way, great job at explaining the strategic plan and the equity plan. Nice job. Can you name all the district goals in the minute? No, I'm just kidding. But, no, so thanks so much and I'll be in contact, yep.
Okay, Ms. Jane.
Thank you. Just a few questions for clarification. All of the courses that were mentioned today are semester-long courses? Is that correct? Or are they full year, right? So although I'm very excited about these electives and I agree with my co-board members about wanting to also take them, part of me is a little concerned whether this will draw students away from taking the core classes that they need. For example, with sports medicine, would a student be taking this instead of biology or chemistry or physics? Like some of these core courses that if not for high school, they may not ever get. Would that scenario ever play out?
So in terms of the sports medicine, that would be in place of physical education.
Oh, it would be in place of physical education, okay.
So there's still a physical education component combined with that instruction. So it wouldn't, that most students would be taking that most likely as their physical education course.
Okay, great.
In most cases.
And what about the construction and the art class? What would that be an elective for?
Those would be student electives that they could choose outside of their core graduation requirements. Most students who are within those science pathway courses are going to express those of interest. These other courses would be that they would fill out their additional kind of course enrollment, course requests for the year in addition to those core course requirements that they've already completed during the course year.
Okay, great. That answers, that answers a lot. Thank you. What about staffing these courses? Because there's different specialties being highlighted. Are, is our current staff able to teach these multiple electives? Or maybe within, yeah, their department?
Yeah, that definitely was part of the kind of development process for us was making sure that we had the right people in place to get the, to get this work done.
That's great. Very exciting. I don't think I have any more questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate really the diversity and the courses you brought forward this time. It's like they're all in a different area or a different spin. And I want to sign my husband up for the construction too. He really needs all of that. But I, I, I think it's a very creative set of course offerings and I look forward to further discussion and approval. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we all have a presentation from Matt Shipley, Robert Lewis, Jason Pinkerton, regarding the referendum plan of finance.
All right, our turns to play with the microphones. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Tonight's presentation is to review the plan of finance associated with the November 2024 referendum and the next steps we would take if successful to finance the work envisioned by the referendum and the master facility plan. Tonight's presentation is aligned with Board Policy 4-40. And it's also aligned, and we'll make references to Board Policy 4-20, 4-82, and 4-84. It's also aligned with Strategic Plan Priority Number Four. Presenting with me this evening is Bob Lewis from PMA Securities. Bob and PMA are the longtime municipal advisors for the district. We really have three objectives for tonight's presentation. The first is that we recognize that it's been 18 years since the district's last referendum. And therefore, it's been a very long time since we've issued referendum bonds. We know this is relatively new for many of our board members and for our community. So we want to provide an overview of what municipal bonds are, the process to issue them, and the roles and responsibilities of the board, administration, and, and our municipal advisor and other partners in this process. We will introduce our plan of finance if the referendum is successful. So this plan is rooted in the master facility plan, our referendum priorities and the timelines and proposals that we've previously shared with the board and we've continually been sharing with the community over the past several months. As we shared during our capital projects update last month, we do want to begin a significant amount of work, specifically the work tied to safety and security, as soon as possible. And so if the referendum is successful, we'll be asking the board to take action pretty quickly to make that possible. And that's part of the reason we're here this evening. Because if the referendum is successful, we do want to move quickly on that first issuance. And so we want to make sure we have as much time as possible to make sure everybody on the board is comfortable with, with our plan and with the steps we need to take. Finally, we will cover briefly what our next steps would be if the referendum is not passed. There are some recent legislative changes that we'll cover that could be tied to some of this contingency planning. But similar to if the referendum is successful, we'll also be coming to the board pretty quickly after an unsuccessful referendum so that we can move forward with our alternative funding plans with necessary operating reductions and again, be able to put that, that contingency plan into place. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bob to overview municipal bonds.
Well, thank you for having me here tonight. And when I go through this presentation, we'll have a moment in the middle where we can stop for questions before we go with more specific information about the district if the board so chooses. And then there'll be time at the end again for questions after we come to the specific, the specifics for the school district. So what are bonds? Well, bonds at their, are used to finance capital projects for local units of government. They can also be, businesses also use bonds and so do governments, or national governments. And local units of government primarily use them to fund capital projects. And at their simplest level, they're a loan. They're a promise to repay your investors' principal and interest. The principal and interest collectively, we call the debt service. And it's paid back according to a fixed schedule at a fixed interest rate that does not change unless the bonds are refinanced in the future. The term of a municipal bond generally ranges from one to 30 years. And most of the bonds are generally sold with a maturity date of 20 years. In fact, until recently, you could only go to a maximum maturity of 20 years. The law was recently changed to allow a maximum up to 30 years for school districts in the state of Illinois. The bond and interest levy is the amount of property taxes specifically requested to repay your bonds. So while your taxpayers, they just see a line for your school district. If you actually looked at what that's made up of, it's made up of what we collectively call the operating rates, which are ed, O and M, transportation. And then there's the bond rate. The bond rate is only used to pay back your, your debt service on your general obligation bonds. And that is, you know, from a bondholder perspective, they really like that because it doesn't matter what happens then operationally to the unit of government. They know that they are going to be repaid from a separate levy. Issuers, school districts and cities and so forth, generally like that as well because then that bond payment doesn't impede your ability to operate your school districts. It also means when the bonds mature, that that bond levy goes away. You can't just redirect those dollars to whatever you choose to do. So your authority levy, that tax goes away with the final payment. Which sometimes is a point of confusion to members of the community because if we pay off one of our loans, a car loan or something, we just redirect that to whatever we want. We don't have to ask our employer, can I, hey, take this money and use it for something else? No. And then lastly, typically, an investor in municipal bond receives what's called federally taxed exempt interest payments. And what, what that means is, is when you pay your interest to an investor in your bonds, they don't have to claim the interest that you pay them as income on their taxes. So therefore, you're receiving an implicit federal subsidy from the government that offsets your, your capital costs. And that amount varies by market conditions. But in today's market, it's at least 1%, maybe up to one and a quarter percent of difference in interest rate, being able to sell them tax-exempt. And you're going to see a little later in the presentation though, that that comes with some strings attached to it. You can't just sell them as tax-exempt without following rules that are set forth by the Internal Revenue Service. Before we talk about those though, let's turn our attention to the Illinois School Code. The School Code sets forth the maximum amount of principal that various units of government can have outstanding. Think of this as your credit card limit. And our credit card limits as individuals, limit how much that we can charge at stores, up to that amount. It's the same thing with school districts, is you have a limit as a unit district issue equal to 13.8% of your equalized assessed value. Your equalized assessed value is pretty substantial, just under $7 billion. So when you calculate and do the math, you come up with $950 million. And you subtract your amount of principal outstanding, which is down to $37 million. Actually, and that will be even lower in just a couple of months here. But that leaves you $913 million of legal debt margin. And that doesn't mean you can just go out and sell it though. You have to have permission under the School Code to sell those obligations. Now there are, now there is written into the School Code an exemption for referendum-approved bonds from this debt margin. You don't need to avail yourself of that exemption. You don't automatically get it. You have to conduct a hearing, do certain publications about it. But it is available now, which is important for school districts that don't have the property wealth that a school district like yours does, that they have to avail themselves of it. Because if their calculation came out to 30 million, their voters approved a $50 million referendum, they couldn't issue all the bonds without that exemption. But you fortunately don't need to take advantage of it with the question that you have put before your voters. Let's pivot, pivot to your credit rating scales. So think of this as our credit score that we have as individuals. The better your credit score is an individual, the lower interest rate you'll get on your car loan or your home mortgage. And the same thing with you. The better your credit rating, the lower your interest rate will be. And there's four different rating agencies out there. The two primarily, the two primary ones used by local units of government are Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's. The other two are only utilized by the largest issuers like State of Illinois, City of Chicago, for example. Your rating most recently is a AA1 by Moody's Investor Service, their second highest rating. And now everybody always wants to get to AAA. Every AA1 or AA+ that client I have, that's, their only question to me is how we get to AAA. And a lot of times it's in factors that you don't have control over. The primary areas they're looking for, looking at are your, your debt levels, which actually is a smaller component of their score. Your finances, your local wealth, and your management, which is policies. finances, your local wealth, and your management, which is policies, practices, procedures, and trends. And while you do very well on all those components, you know, your wealth levels are strong, but they're not as strong as, for example, like Highland Park or Hinsdale. And your fund balances, while good, aren't as high as some of your other peers either. You know, they might be at 50% or more to get that AAA rating. So, but having said that, having the second highest rating doesn't impact you too much when you borrow, maybe 0.05 to 0.1%. So, you're talking about now a significant amount of basis points in difference in outcome for a bond sale. Okay, so what happens after the election if it's successful? Well, regardless of whether it's successful or not, the counties have 21 days to canvass the election and to officially state what the result is. Sometimes they do it a little sooner in 21 days. Oftentimes, it's right up to that 21 days. And then it's filed by a 30-day petition period in which people could challenge the results. Typically, that's not a concern unless you have a very close outcome. And so, if you're successful, the district has up to five years to sell those bonds from the date of the referendum. So, that would be five years from November 5th this year. So, you'd have plenty of time to sell the bonds because you're not going to need all the proceeds at one time. And you have to have expectations on how quickly you can spend those proceeds, which we'll discuss in a moment. For those reasons, bonds are typically issued in more than one series. So, if you approved $420 million, you're not going to issue it all at one time. So, what would be the next steps, again, if it's successful? We already went over the steps that the county has to do. You, as a board of education, could authorize what's called a parameters resolution as soon as the December 2 meeting. And the parameters resolution sets forth the maximum amount you would sell in that first series. So, it wouldn't be the full $420 million. It'd be whatever we anticipate you would sell in that first tranche. The final payment date, the maximum interest rate, et cetera. Delegates are then named to approve the sale. The delegates consist of a mixture of elected and administrative officials. That way, there's input from both. Typically, that's the chief school business official, the superintendent, board president, and vice president, and then one of each of those would typically sign off on the sale. That authorization, that parameters resolution typically expires six months after passage or the next board election. It's because it's typically not the same seven people that originally approved the resolution. Once that laps, you would then, the board would approve a future resolution for subsequent sales. It's expected that those bonds would be sold via competitive sale when, if you are successful. And that's what you have done for nearly all, or all your bond sales in the past. And the next slide will show you an example of the outcome of a competitive sale. And after a bond sale, that resolution you approve, as well as a notification of sales filed with the counties, and that gives them the authority to levy the taxes on your behalf. So, whenever you sold bonds, and it's been a while since we've done a bond sale here, 2018, I believe, or 2017, 2017. So, when that bond issue was sold, that was to refinance some outstanding bonds, that resolution was filed with the county, and the county has relied upon that to extend the taxes every year since then. And they will do that as long as you don't pass an official document telling them not to do it. So, this is a sample outcome for competitive sale. And this one was recently done for Hinsdale 181 a little, a few months ago. They did a, that's a debt certificate sale to finance improvements to its buildings to handle the full day kindergarten mandate. The bid was awarded to TDE Securities. Their true interest cost, the true interest cost is a composite of the underwriting firm's interest rates and their fee. So, the underwriting firm who buys your bonds will then take those bonds and resell them to their investor clientele, who could consist of individuals, various funds, exchange traded funds, banks, casualty insurance companies, to name a few. Okay, so let's pivot now to some of the IRS rules that all units of government that sell tax exempt bonds have to follow. One of those is the expenditure of bond proceeds test. There's three tests that have to be met. I've highlighted in blue the first one because this is the primarily one that we're focused on. The others usually follow what the first one follows. And that is that you have to have reasonable expectation to spend 85% of the proceeds within three years of the sale of that bond issue. And now, again, the key word I just said there was reasonable expectation. The IRS knows that circumstances can change. It can cause you to spend the proceeds slower than you anticipated, like environmental issues, for example, changes in the project scope. And you might get to the third year and you're only at 75%. You're not automatically in issue with the IRS. It just means Matt will have had to document the reasons why in case you're ever audited on that bond issue. It's not, you don't have to file any automatic report with the IRS in relation to the bond. But just like us as individuals, the IRS will randomly audit units of government to see their compliance with their bond issues. The next one is a time test. You have to enter into an agreement within five, to spend 5% of the proceeds in six months. You don't actually have to spend it. You just have to be in agreement to do so. So, that could be a combination of architectural contract, some of those preliminary engagements that you have will meet that test. And the third one is a due diligence test. Typically, this is not one that we're concerned about because most of the time you're selling the bonds, you need to start spending those proceeds. But what this is specifically about is, in case you have an issuer that meets that first test, spends 85% in the first three years, but sat on that money for the first two years, the IRS may question, well, why'd you even sell it then if you didn't do anything with it for the first two years, regardless of the fact that you spent it in the, in three years? And then, so what we do is we work with the administration to look at your construction draw schedule. And we've gotten some preliminary numbers already to help put together a plan and when the bonds might be sold so that you can meet those requirements. Okay, another concept that comes out of the tax code is called arbitrage. And simplest level, arbitrage is a difference between the rate that you borrow at and the rate you invest at. So, arbitrage is not something that frequently occurs. It usually, you know, it occurs depending on the economic conditions we find ourselves in nationally. Right now, we find ourselves in a point in time where the Federal Reserve is, has high short-term interest rates to fight inflation. And consequently, the rate at which you invest at will be higher than the rate that you borrow at, more than likely. And that's what it is right now. It's not as great as it was a few months ago, but maybe a year ago at this time, I had clients that were borrowing at a rate 1% lower than they're investing at. So, generally, you have to pay those rebate earnings, excuse me, those arbitrage earnings back to the federal government. You do a calculation at the fifth anniversary, and if you had positive arbitrage, you have to write a check back to the IRS for it, which is not the worst thing in the world. Because what that means then is you earned every dollar that you could possibly do of investment earnings. But whenever possible, you want to avoid that and try to keep your positive arbitrage if you have it, because this is more dollars than that you have for construction. Well, so they do provide exemptions to meeting, of being able to keep your positive arbitrage. There's one that's called the small issuer exemption. Now, that's for any entity that, any school entity that issues $15 million or less of tax exempt bonds in a single calendar year. And it's $5 million for anything that's not a school, so, just so you know. So, you are, you know, if you are successful, your question's 420 million. And so, obviously, 15 million isn't going to do a whole lot in that number, but it is one of the strategies we're talking, we've talked about with our clients, is when there's an opportunity to take advantage of it, you could. So, for example, if you pass in November and you sell and close on a bond issue by December 31st, and you make it $15 million or less, that first $15 million could be exempt from arbitrage rebate. And that also establishes and maintains your bond levy. You'll see in a few pages here that there's a slight decrease without it. And secondly, or additionally, it then gives you that initial money for some of those early costs that you'll be incurring before you need to do a bigger financing at some point in 2025. Now, there are other exemptions, exceptions you can meet if you spend the proceeds fast enough. Six-month is not going to, you're not going to spend all the proceeds in six months, so it's not going to apply. The 18th month exception is one that occurs when some of the proceeds are used to purchase land. So, back when you passed referenda with regularity years ago, oftentimes, there was a discussion about how to best sell the bonds so that whenever you guys were purchasing land, that was sort of done by itself. So, it was part of the 18th month exception. And then, bonds that were for just construction projects would be done separately. So, you could qualify for the 20-month, 4-month exception. Well, in this plan of finance, I don't believe you're buying any land, right? Okay. So, all we're focused on is 20 more, 24-month exception. And you may or may not be able to meet them depending on how we look at the draw schedule, working with your construction team and Mr. Shipley. And one thing to be aware of is, this is a test where you have to meet all four of those time constraints. So, if you meet the 10% and you miss the second one at 45%, but you catch up and meet 75, once you miss one, you've missed them all. Okay? So, it's one of these things that we monitor carefully to say, hey, you're very close at 45%. Can you get a bill from somebody so you can pay it and meet that deadline so you can keep any positive arbitrage? So, this is probably a good time to pause before we look at more specific items related to you. Any questions on this general framework about municipal bonds?
I'm just going to offer this out to anyone if they have any questions about the material that was presented.
To this point?
Yes, to this point.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Rising.
If you could go to slide five. I just want to reiterate and clarify. You did say that for any, essentially, any significant borrowing, we have, we could borrow up to $913 million, but that would, for any significant borrowing, that would require voter approval through a referendum of some type.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, kind of just a general question of what you've talked about so far. So, 20 years ago, or 18 years ago, when we borrowed our last money with voter approval to build Matilla Valley High School, we borrowed about $150 million at that point. The reason why we borrowed that much and took out that much at that point was because I think we had a good idea, and this is going back to referencing some of your slides, we had a good idea that we would spend down at least 85% within those three years. Where you are about to go with the arbitrage, I believe, is you're going to be showing the reason why we have to take out in different issuances, should the voters approve the bond referendum, why we have to do separate issuances because of the way, the ways we need to meet those spend down exceptions for borrowing, correct?
Yeah, it's that and the 85% test. So, it's trying to, because some of your projects are more than three years out.
Right.
Before you even start them. So, that, that's, so this 85% test is driving some of that.
Right.
But then, the other thing you look at are, yeah, the spend down exceptions to try to keep the positive arbitrage. So, balance, so meeting both of those requirements.
And that's kind of why I wanted to just clarify that, because I think when people are seeing on the ballot 420 million, well, yes, that is up to how much we could borrow. But we're going to be doing those in different issuances because of the things that we have to meet along the way with building, construction, spend down exceptions, and so on and so forth. So, I just want to make sure we're just being totally transparent with the, with the taxpayers and with our constituents, because those are the ways in which we need to do this to best align to spending that money and not getting essentially penalized.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Did you have a question, Ms. Dunning?
Really quickly, on slide nine, slide nine, on the competitive sale, how are we able to, to, when I think of competition, you know, you have an opportunity to assess where's the best deal for you.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a, do we have a chance to do that within this situation? Are there multiple players coming from a competitive situation here or not?
Yeah, so each one of these is a regional or national underwriting firm that you see listed there.
Okay, so those were all, okay.
Yeah.
They truly, and we can, whoever's competing will be able to see them all before we have to make a determination?
Well, so at, so what will happen is typically around 10:00 or 10:00 AM or 10:30 in the morning, there'll be notice, so a document is prepared that is called the official statement that is provided to potential underwriting firms to share with their investor clientele that describes everything you'd want to know as an informed investor about the district. And then they use that, that usually is released about a week before the sale. The sale is advertised and the bond buyer, Bloomberg, TM3, and at such and such date, at 10:00 AM, the district's accepting bids for their bonds. And it'll be awarded to whichever firm has the lowest true interest cost. And that lowest true interest cost is a combination of their interest rate and their fee. And they all have to meet the same requirements of when the principal's being repaid back and the term. And so, whoever has that lowest rate wins.
Okay.
And then, and then the name delegates. So, what happens is we get that, I shoot off a quick email to Matt, let him know the results. And then the afternoon, we'll hold a conference call with the delegates for them to approve the sale.
Okay, perfect. That's, I just wanted to, I was trying to understand whether we could, whether we, whether all of those would be seen in order that that determination could really be made. I didn't know whether that's what I was asking.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, back to slide five. The $913 million is kind of, in a way, our credit limit, right? So, when we take out, if this passes 420, we're way below our limit that we have before we have some kind of consequences for that. So, that's a good news thing. I think it's very interesting discussion. I think everyone understands the need for project management around all of the, if the referendum passes, all of the different projects that we have and managing those to a certain timeline. I guess a lot of people don't understand the connection and the finance part that actually also has to be carefully managed on when you're issuing the bonds and when you are completing that piece of the project so that you do benefit from some of these other financial benefits, right?
That's correct.
Yes. This, it just kind of intrigued me, a question that you brought up, fund balances. And we keep a relatively low but needed fund balance to make sure that we maintain our rating and the state for our finances. But is there a limit for schools on how high their fund balance can be, or is that completely open?
Well, there's a, there is a law that recently was passed, but it's a really large number. I know you're sure many schools, if you hit it, it's 250%.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so.
There are some in the North Shore that could close.
So, we're at, we're at about 38%, right?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. And then, maybe it's a question for later, but if the referendum does pass, you mentioned about the $15 million exception and issuing something before the end of 2024. Is that something that we would target to do?
Yes, that's part of the financing.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Fazek.
For my own understanding, is it the lender that's applying this test? Where are the tests coming from?
Like this one here?
Yes.
This comes from the School Code.
From the School Code?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
This one specifically is the School Code. I think everything that we've shown is kind of a combination of School Code, IRS regulations, so.
So, with that, we will kind of take general discussion points about school finance and municipal bonds and apply it to our specific situation here at Indian Prairie. So, of our master facility plan priorities. Four, and this is what we continue to share with our community as we inform our community about our referendum proposal. And again, this information is available through ipsd.org/safestronger204, along with a lot more information on our master facility plan, as well as the anticipated costs of that proposal. Again, as we know, four of the five priorities are directly addressed through the referendum. Learning environments will see some, some benefit. Learning environments will see some, some benefits, but as, as we've discussed before, it's not the highest priority area to be funded by the referendum. Safety and security is that highest priority, and again, that's where when we talk about really wanting to get work started early, it is in that safe, safety and security area. Again, we've also shared the timeline at a high level with the community for, for these improvements, so that's available on the website as well. We've had some good discussions already on, on the financing piece of maybe why all the bonds can't be issued at once the day after the election, but there's also some, some facility improvement and capital implications to that as well. And I know we've had conversations with the community, I was at Gregory Middle School last week for our town hall, and, and one of the comments is, well, if this work is such high priority, how come it's, it's not scheduled for another four or five years? And it's, it's definitely a valid piece of feedback, but with, the truth is, with the scope of work we are looking at, with the need to impact every one of our facilities throughout the district, the work does need to be spread out so that it can be managed properly, so that we can, we can ensure continuity of education and continuity of programming throughout this capital plan. And so, as a result, that, that really plays into, to what we're gonna see with our financing proposal where we are looking to issue the bonds in, in three or four different series over, over the next five years. So, working with PMA, we've used our, our timelines and budgets, again, information that, that's really been publicly available and available to the board for several months. And we worked to identify a funding strategy that will fund the projects and have funding available when needed, to ensure that we are compliant with the many rules and requirements we just covered, and to do it in a way that, that sticks to our goal of not having a tax rate increase for our, for our residents and taxpayers. And so, all of those considerations leads to the, the proposed borrowings you see in front of you. Again, this is just a proposal, this is not, this will vary slightly as we look at, at getting into the, the actual construction and modifying to, to exact construction schedules. But, but as already mentioned, we would look at doing a fourteen and a half million dollar issuance in December of this year. That is from the, the capital side or the, the building improvement side to fund the first round of improvements, to, to look at it from the, the debt issuance perspective, that is to take advantage of that small issuer exemption and be able to ensure we can collect full arbitrage on that first issuance. Just one other reminder before I kind of turn it back over to Bob to go over some other details, we would look to amend our budget if the referendum is successful to account for that December offering, but we would not need to, to amend that budget prior to the issuance, so that would not be something that, that holds us up, that would be something we could do after the fact in, in January and February.
So these colors here line up with the colors in the next graph. So the gray columns at the beginning are your current bond and interest levies, I mean, those are the dollars collected specifically to pay, pay your outstanding bonds. So it was actually higher just to, for last summer's tax bills, and then you had a decline to this year's levy, levy of twenty-three is collected in twenty-four, remember, there's that one year leg from levy to collection. And then levy of twenty-four is, there's another slight decline, so one of the strategies about doing the fourteen and a half to fifteen million dollars is so that we maintain that payment with the prior year. And then, the other bonds start layering into their roughly be paid back in twenty years. We do have, as I mentioned earlier, under the school code, you do have the authority to go up to thirty years now, we don't want to utilize that full thirty year authority, but it's nice to know that we have a little bit of wiggle room if you need to do twenty-one or twenty-two years or something, we now have the ability to do that. And again, this is all subject to change as market conditions change or as adjustments in the construction draw schedules, this is going to be something that we'll, we'll experience some modifications over time, again, if approved. So I've already mentioned a few times throughout the presentation, there's some recent legislative changes as it relates to how school districts can borrow and access the capital markets, and there's this term called the debt service extension base, and you've probably never heard of that because your district doesn't have one. And, so, this was something that was born as part of the tax cap back in the early nineties, and it was set to equal whatever you were levying for in dollars for non-referendum principal and interest payments in nineteen ninety-four, for you. It varies by county depending on when tax caps applied to you. Unfortunately for you, the, and many other Coward County school districts, tax caps came to the Coward Counties first in nineteen ninety-one. And in nineteen ninety-one, when they came about, they ended your ability to borrow on a non-referendum basis. And so in nineteen ninety-four, when it was applied to Cook County, that's when they created this concept called the debt service extension base. So entities in Cook County and other counties, when it was voted in via referendum, had the ability to levy more on a non-referendum basis to create a larger debt service extension base, or create one if they didn't have one. Well, because you guys were locked out in nineteen ninety-one, you were left with whatever you happened to have in nineteen ninety-four, which was zero. So, you have not had the ability to do non-referendum borrowing for capital projects ever since nineteen ninety-one. So, now you can get a debt service extension base if you don't have one, but it has to be approved by the voters. It's not an avenue that is taken very often, and I think it's hard to understand for voters. So, so consequently, you know, if you need to borrow for your capital needs, you, your only option is to do it via referendum until recently. So, these are the other, so I had to give you that backdrop because one of the changes in the law specifically relates to, to that restraint. The first one I already mentioned earlier is that voter approved bonds, for anything approved on November fifth or afterwards, no longer count against the debt limit as long as you conduct a hearing, the hearing has certain publication requirements that are met. You, if you're successful, you still have over half a million dollars, not half a million, half a billion dollars of authority left, so there's really no reason for you to take exemption, or use of this exemption. And it's a decision you can always make at some point, like, it's not a decision you make at the beginning, so if you decide to sell the first bond series and not worry about this, but later on, if you guys decide, hey, let's just get the exemption on the second tranche or the third tranche, you can do it then, it's, you don't have to decide at the beginning. Already mentioned that now you have up to thirty years to repay the debt, which again, doesn't necessarily mean that you should go out to the full thirty years, but we have the ability to do something in between as well. And then for tax cap school districts, a certain type of bond that exists in the school code called a life safety bond no longer has to fit within the debt service extension base, which is advantageous to a district like yourself and some others that don't have a debt service extension base, but this is a very limited use. Because the school code sets forth four different types of non-referendum bonds that schools can do, previously all four had to fit within D sub, and three of them still do. And those have more flexibility than life safety bonds. Life safety bonds can now be issued by your school district, but they're very restrained on what you can use them for. Actually, the fourth bullet point here on this slide says you have to have evidence of a life safety approval. How do you get a life safety approval? Because you can't decide, like, let's just solve four hundred million dollar life safety bond, you can't do that, okay? You have to have your architects go through your buildings, they, they go through and fill all the paperwork that goes down to the regional office education, right, early, and then from there it goes down to ISB, ISB has to review that, make sure whatever you're requesting matches what the school code says, and then they'll give you back your life safety approvals. And whatever's in that number is the maximum amount of life safety bonds you can do, and my understanding, working with the administration, is the percentage of your needs are less than ten percent would be life safety. I don't know if you want to elaborate on that anymore?
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Or we, okay, next slide. So, as, the other thing about life safety bonds, not only do they not have to fit in your D sub anymore, there's no petition period like some of the other school bonds that schools with D subs can do, before they do them, they have to go through a petition period, and life safety bonds do not have that petition period. The only requirement you have to do besides getting the approvals is to conduct a hearing about using the life safety bonds.
So that kind of transitions to our, to our final topic of the evening, which is what, what we would look to, to steps we would take or what the next steps would be if the referendum is, is not successful. And again, just like I mentioned earlier, we would look for, for some of this to be completed shortly after the election in November, or at least start on, on that work with our board. So, as we identified during our, our budget presentation most recently in July, it would take about thirteen million dollars of annual operating transfers or other revenue sources to fund the bare minimum of, of work we've included in the master facility plan. And so, really, the, the remaining points here are really trying to talk about how we would generate that additional thirteen million dollars annually if a referendum is not successful. So, first, the, the first point is, and it's kind of already covered there, but we would look at a reduction in the total planned capital work or, or planned investment. So if we take our master facility plan, we would see significant reductions from what's currently being presented as part of our referendum proposal. Next, we would looking at using planned reserve contributions or additional fund balance, so transferring operating fund balance to, to capital. We've calculated that we can contribute about forty million dollars of, of money from operating fund balance to capital fund balance and still be compliant with our fund balance policy. So that's money currently that, that's providing additional assurance to our district about additional protection against state funding delays or, or other challenges from, with state and federal funding. So we would be sort of reducing that, that cushion we have and the protection we have against those revenue sources. We could make an additional transfer with a modification to fund balance policy. I would not make that recommendation, that would put us in the range where we would potentially not be able to, to pay all our bills during the, the regular calendar year, and we would need to potentially use lines of credit or tax anticipation notes. So that's not a direction we, we would recommend at this time. Second, we, we would recommend using life safety bonds as available. As Bob alluded to earlier, we, we've identified about thirty million dollars worth of, of work that, that could potentially be funded by life safety bonds, but there are some challenges. And so, I think, you know, I just want to walk through a few examples really quick because I think this is a little counterintuitive even for myself. We've had a referendum that's really focused on critical infrastructure and safety and security upgrades, we've had a team of architects and engineers evaluate that to, to support our, our number of, of four hundred million dollars directed to that work, and yet when we go to do the life safety report as required by the state, we're really struggling to, to get anywhere close to that number. So, just want to talk through that delta a little bit. First, we do have to understand those life safety reports are completed once every ten years, and they do need, so they're, they're not updated on a regular basis, and as, as Bob mentioned earlier, they need a regular review process by the state which, which does take time and sort of further delays our ability to act on those reports. Secondly, kind of by, those reports are really designed to bring buildings back up to code, so again, there's not a focus on getting maybe above code or catching up with code, it's really just about getting back to where the, the building code would recommend a building's at. Which in some ways by definition means it's funding needs that are already past due or already deferred. So this is not a, a funding source that really allows us to proactively address infrastructure Again, a few specific examples that, that maybe talk to this, this challenge a little bit as well. Safety and security, so the word safety is in that word, life safety bonds. Things like door replacements, which we've talked about with our community is a real high priority for us, that, that would be included as, as life safety reports, to the extent, again, that they've identified the door already isn't closing reliably or is rusted out or is already an imminent safety hazard. But things that wouldn't be included are things like our secure vestibule work, our security cameras, those are not included as, as life safety work. Again, it, you know, it, it would allow us to, to repair or fix areas that maybe are already in need of repair, but like, if you have a floor where you have areas that are already cracked or worn, a life safety report would, would authorize fixing that small portion of the floor, but wouldn't necessarily authorize fixing the rest of, rest of the floor. So you could have a, a gym space or an NPR or even a classroom where the recommendation is to fix a portion, a small portion of the classroom, and you can get maybe a couple thousand dollars out of the life safety process to fund that. But you couldn't fund, you know, the full flooring replacement that work that we really want to do it throughout our schools. Another example, and I have Gregory's report in front of me, so this is a real example from Gregory, where we've been issued a citation that we have a bathroom that's not ADA compliant. So again, Gregory, the bathrooms are still original to the building, they're about forty year old bathrooms, they're, they're old and outdated in addition to, to not being ADA compliant. The recommendation in the, in the report, however, is that we, and that we put a sign up by that bathroom directing individuals to another ADA compliant bathroom in the building. So that's an example of a life safety solution for, for this potential problem. I think, as a district, our preference would be we actually go in and we update that bathroom to, again, both serve our students that have ADA needs as, as well as the whole community as well. A similar thing, again, directly from Gregory's report, we've, we've made a big emphasis on generating operating efficiencies, and one area we've identified is lighting. So again, the report has identified some light fixtures in, in Gregory that would need replacement, but it would, it would allow it to just go up to current code. So again, not an opportunity to really identify the most efficient, the most, the most productive cost savings and, and solution, just get it up to, to the current code for, for light fixtures and, and energy, energy usage. And so, really, that, those are, those are several examples that really speak, speak to some of the challenges with these life safety bonds. Again, we wanted to bring this forth to the, the board this evening because if the referendum's not successful, we, this may be a route we're forced to take, but it's not a route we, we really think is right for, for the needs of the district at this time. And that really gets us to, to the final, you know, final source of, of savings that we would need to make to, in order to, to have money to fund needed repairs for our building, and that is operational reductions. So that is, we're currently estimating that would be about five million dollars a year after taking some of that one-time fund balance money after factoring in some of these other potential uses. That is about a fifty FT reduction potentially for next year, so that, that will be almost impossible for us to do without directly impacting class sizes, without seeing some programming changes at, at really all levels throughout the district. Again, these are, these are contingency plans, we continue to be optimistic in, in our work in forming the community, but if, if not successful with the referendum on November fifth, we would look to, to start taking action on this plan shortly after that election. And I think with that, Bob and I are available for any other questions.
Mr. Krubus?
Thanks for the presentation. I've got, I want to drill down first on the fund balance. You mentioned that, and I think you explained it, but I want to go a little deeper. The fund balance, we have, we get big chunks of our payments when the real estate tax revenue comes into our district, and then we get regular state payments, but I've been on the, the board and there is a history of the state not making its payments and us having to cover the gap in those state payments using our fund balances to make it to payroll. And you talk about a fund balance, but it measures at one point in time, and it's right after we get our large real estate tax payment, and it, it doesn't really factor in our lowest point, which is usually in May. And, so you want to have enough in the bank to make your May payments so that you can get to June. And if you don't have enough of a fund balance, then you got to borrow, and you mentioned the tax anticipation warrants. So then you are now taking a loan against the revenue that you expect to get in June to cover your May payments, and so, now you're incurring interest and costs and reducing the usefulness of those, you know, June payments because now you're using it, reducing it by the interest rate. So, it is important to maintain a fund balance. I do not want the board to go deep into our fund balances. We don't have a particularly large fund balance where we're sitting out of a pile of money and not doing anything with it. And then, it takes a really long time to build a fund balance, it's not something where you can say, oh, I spent ten million, let's put ten million back. It takes a little bit every year to keep saving that money. So it is for a rainy day, and we have a history of needing it, and we have reached some really low points. I don't recall ever taking out loans in May, tax anticipation warrants to cover our payments, and I hope we never do. And then, talking about, you mentioned some of the things that I think are important for the referendum focus, which would be the entrances, the security, cameras, the, the lighting. One thing from a, not an equity standpoint, from- One thing from a, not an equity standpoint, from an equality standpoint, I just want to make a statement on is, is the turf fields. Now, people might not say, you know, that's an important, critical infrastructure, but from an equality standpoint, we have one high school that has a turf field that is beyond its life expectancy and has, you know, Band-Aids and it's getting sewn together. That needs to get replaced, but we have two other high schools that don't have turf fields. And so if we are at a point where we're replacing one and the other two don't, from an equality standpoint, our community says, "Why aren't you, why aren't you taking care of me as well?" So it might be something as small as a turf field, but there's many examples throughout our different buildings because they're all generally different. We did stamp a lot of them through the same architecture, but we have, you know, we built them at different times, codes were different at different times, and so it, from an equality standpoint, I think our community supports trying to make the educational experience as close as possible to each of, for each of the students at each of our schools. And then my future board comment is that we're talking about a lot of things, and we're focusing on referendum, yes or no, some future projects, yes or no, but a lot of this is very forward-thinking. And so if we're looking at, for example, what is it? Page seventeen. We're talking about issuing bonds in 2029. So even if a referendum is approved, the board isn't going to take action on that referendum until 2029. And so there's a lot that can happen between now and 2029. You know, there's the economy, there's, you know, the needs, there's changes in the code, you know, and there's three school board elections between then and now, which can dramatically change how, you know, future boards look at this. So I think it's important, as we look further and further out, to say, are future boards going to look back and say, "Well, the community spoke one way or the other, and I am going to honor that community commitment in, you know, from 2024. Am I going to honor that in 2029?" So there's a lot of deltas, a lot of unknowns as we go through this, but I didn't hear anything about kind of like the board structure as we look at this. And I think that's an important aspect, too, is that I don't plan on being here in 2029 to vote on the bond, the bond approval in then, so there's going to be a different composition here that hopefully looks back and says, "Whatever was done in 2024, that, you know, we should stay the course," or, yeah, so we should stay the course.
Yeah, and I think that's a great point that maybe we weren't as explicit on, but just to reiterate, each issuance does, that parameter resolution is approved by the board at that time prior to that parameter resolution. So you're correct, the referendum itself needs to be approved first. We need to confirm it's within our legal debt margin, which we have, and then that each of the proposed issuances would then come before the board at the appropriate time for the board at that time to approve a parameters resolution. And there are, I mean, Bob would, I'm sure, have some examples of situations where, to your point, a referendum was successful, but then situations changed, and maybe that full referendum amount wasn't issued for one reason or another.
We've, I recall sitting in this chair, and that situation came up. We were refunding some bonds to get a more favorable interest rate, and the question came before us whether we extend the term or honor the voters and prior boards' direction that, "Let's keep it to twenty years." And that was an option that we, as a board, could say, "Well, do we extend the term or do we just keep it at the twenty?" And the board said, "Let's keep it at the twenty because the board said twenty." And so I thought that was an important thing that I think we should all take in, that, you know, as a bunch of volunteers up here to kind of think about some of that history to say, you know, "How do you want to operate as a board member?" The, and it even drills down to the construction projects, right? So each, you know, the construction projects are going to need to be approved on a regular basis, you know, it's going to need to be bidded out and, you know, reviewed, and so each of those boards is going to have to then approve the actual construction contracts. So there's a big series of events that happen, and thanks for laying out some of this to get us to, you know, through December, and I'm looking forward to some of this. But there's also like a board aspect of this, of when board action is required, or when are these things going to come before the board? So thank you for your work.
Mr. Rising.
You can stand this slide, actually. So I had mentioned in the last round of questions about, you know, arbitrage and the things you have to do and the reason why we have to do these issuances, and I'm glad you laid this out, but I also want to kind of reference this to the current referendum that's on the ballot, which has to do with that four hundred and twenty million. What we have been telling the public in a lot of the, in all of the town forums that we've had is that the way we get this four hundred and twenty million is the continuance of the current bond and interest thirty-seven cent rate that everybody is currently paying. And we always, we talk about and we say, and it's been said out there, that this is a no-tax rate increase, which it isn't, but it is also, if you want to phrase it a different way, we're asking the public for the continuance of the current thirty-seven cent tax that they're paying for the current bond and interest to pay off, our bonds that we're about to pay off. My question to you is, in the twenty years that we've been paying off these bonds, the reason why we landed on this four hundred and twenty million is because it's the current rate that we're paying for the bond and interest. And it was intentional that we aligned that with the current bond and interest payment of thirty-seven cents, which is equal to the four hundred and twenty million. However, my question to you is, in the past twenty years, this is the lowest that rate has been in the past twenty years, correct? And I don't know if you want to speak to that. And then my follow-up question to that, right after that, you can address right away, is we've talked about this a few times, we talked about it in the last budget presentation, is that the school district has intentionally, or we are also at the historicest low rate of property tax rate that our residents have seen in a while. So I just wanted you to address that really quick.
Again, I think some of this speaks to what Board Member Carubus spoke about previously, about there was a commitment to really keep the bond rate, or the total bond repayment number flat by previous boards when that Matia bond was issued in 2006, 2007, and then when other refunding opportunities came up as well. And so what's happened is we've had a dollar amount levied for bond and interest each year, generally between twenty-seven and twenty-eight million for many years. And as EAV, as property wealth increased, the rate actually went down. And so there was a time when our bond and interest rate was over, was a sixty-cent rate, sixty-one or sixty-two cent rate. We're now down to about a thirty-seven cent rate. That twenty-seven million's actually dipped to about twenty-five and a half million, as we mentioned earlier, and that's what we're looking to lock in right now. So you are correct that we're locking in for, as part of this proposal and for the future, the lowest bond and interest rate that the district has had in many years and the lowest annual payment towards bond and interest that the district has had in many years.
Yeah, and I just say that to be transparent because I think it's important that our residents know that this is the lowest that rate has been, and that's just what we're asking to continue. And we've also been transparent in saying that if the voters don't approve this, people will see about ninety-three dollars per every a hundred thousand dollars assessed value in a reduction of their property taxes, which is roughly average across the district, maybe six, seven hundred dollars. But that's a one-time reduction that they're going to see. I mean, because the next year, it's going to be, you know, it could go up based on the assessor or whatever, or their assessed value. So all we're doing is asking to continue that six, seven hundred dollars that they're existing paying and to help us do all these things that we're looking at for the district. So if you go to slide twenty-three, yeah, this one was painful for me. And just historic, when I came on board in 2011, we were coming out of, between 2008 and 2010 and into 2011, of some major reductions that we had to make to our district and cuts due to the state not funding us adequately. Fast forward thirteen, fourteen years, we are still, as a district, only eighty-four percent adequately funded as a district. I remember the staffing cuts that took place that were drastic back then. Fourteen years later, we are still trying to make up those staffing cuts that we made back then because of our financial situation as a district, that we are a tier-two district, we are not a wealthy district, and we're spending less than the state average, not because we want to, it's because of the amount of revenue that we have as a district. When I look at this, I dread having to go down this path as a board member because I will tell the community, and we maintain some of the highest class sizes, we have been trying to make up that staffing as best as we can, and we've made some significant gains, but we still have a ways to go. You know, when we look at administration, we have the lowest number of administrators. I think we rank like eight hundred and forty out of eight hundred and fifty districts of the lowest amount of administrators. We've rebid all our contracts. There are not a lot of cuts to make, and when I look at this, especially the last bullet point, and I look at having to raise class sizes and having to cut programs, our community will feel this, and I'm concerned for my neighbors, my family, and our district. But that's the reality we may face, and I appreciate you laying this out. You know, to Mr. Carubus's point, when we look at the fund balances and that second bullet point, and Ms. Donahue mentioned this, where we have about a thirty, thirty-five percent fund balance of our revenues. I hear a lot of people say reserves, fund balance, the district slush fund. This is it. It's three, about three months, a little over three months of revenues that are equal to our annual revenue. So it's three months about that of our annual revenues. So it's not a lot of money. And then when I calculated all four of these things, best-case scenario, if all those things all worked out to our advantage, we're looking at that, we're looking maybe, and my calculations could be wrong, but at about eighty to a hundred million dollars roughly, and we need four hundred and twenty million dollars to make all the improvements that are needs, that are not wants. So even with all of these things, we are still significantly behind, and I'm concerned, but based on what the community, how the community feels, we will have to go down that path. And yeah, so thank you for the work. Thank you for outlining this. I appreciate it.
Ms. Jane.
Thank you. This was personally a tough deck for me to go through, but what you all did today was really make it make sense, so I thank you for that. In the first half of the slides, what I really appreciated was the explanation of the rules, school code, IRS rules, basically informing us and the community at large that there are checks and balances in place, that the funds and the monies that are collected are used appropriately as intended, in a timely fashion. And I think that's important for us to be aware of as well as the community. The latter half of the presentation, we've seen versions of these slides that Mr. Shipley has been so great at explaining in terms of the timeline, in terms of even the issuance of these bonds at different times. We've been introduced to that, and this just took us a little bit deeper, and I really appreciate that. I think the last slide is to what Board Member, slide number twenty-three, to what Board Member Rising stated. This, after hearing everything else, this slide for me, once again, it just, it just shows what our options are. And despite the diligence and thoughtfulness that the administration and previous boards have spent trying to invest and to be financial stewards, we certainly don't want to go down this path. And so I thank you for summarizing that in this one slide and speaking to it. There were a few questions or clarification. Board Member Gents and I were just thinking about, did you mention cuts to full-time faculty? What was the number that you mentioned?
At this point, we're, it'd be estimated about fifty.
About fifty, okay. Yeah, that's not, we've worked so hard in the last few years to try to increase those positions, decrease class sizes. That's certainly something we all want to do here, so this is definitely taking us in the opposite direction. But overall, thank you so much for this.
Ms. Fazdak.
All right, like Board Member Jane, this was a lot of digestion, but it really did help for me to sit through the explanation verbally and be able to revisit it while that was happening. I appreciate this very carefully planned-out and organized explanation of the restrictions and codes that we have to follow in order to go down this path. My only ask is this, would it be correct to say that with the referendum passing, we could, with these bonds, maintain, renovate, and build upon our highest-quality facilities and provide that education, but without the referendum passing, but with some life safety bonds, we are going to have to resort to the bare minimum with potentially larger class sizes and program cuts? Is that an accurate statement?
I think that's accurate, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gents.
Yeah, thank you, guys. I just have to reiterate what everyone has really said. Thank you. You have helped make sense of all of this really in a way that I think is easier for all of us to understand in the community as well. Honestly, Board Member Jane addressed the one question I had, which was that clarification on the reduction of FTEs, and I think we can all agree, whether it was fifteen or fifty, it is not something we're looking to do. So again, thank you, guys, so much.
Ms. Dumbing.
Explanation was extremely helpful, so thank you. There's quite angst in, as this presentation, because it's a lot, but we really needed to see it and hear it. Slide eighteen was really important for me, and I think really helps understand the fact that as we're talking about the bond issuance, that it's not something, as you've alluded to and shared, that we're going to see all at one time, but really sharing and seeing that breakdown is really important and understanding that things will come back to boards again. Overall approval, if the referendum does pass, but with each particular project that occurs, that each board, you know, that'll be brought before each board in those specific, regarding those specific anticipated arenas for the bond. So that's really helpful for me and hopefully for the public to understand. It's not all at one time. It's a, it'll be an issuance over time, so thank you for that. The fund balance situation, you know, as we talked about, you talked about that, you compared us to some, to a variety of districts. Can you just make sure, I want to make sure that the, that it's clear Can you just make sure, I want to make sure that the, that it's clear why we might be, you know, in a further, have a lower fund balance than others? Because I'm not sure sometimes that the public understands, and it's not due to anything, any mismanagement, but, but can you discuss that a little bit for us, Matt, please?
Yeah, I think it, it comes to just, just the general, the general environment that all our finances operate under to, to some extent, and that's being a, a tier-two district, so a district that's, that's 84% funded. There's a recognition at the state level that we do not have the, the property wealth that other districts have. And so that, that all, that does mean lower revenues per student, and over time, that, that means the, a lower ability to, to accumulate fund balance. And so the, the districts that you hear that have significantly higher fund balances, generally speaking, are also the ones that have that, that higher source of local wealth. They're receiving more property tax revenue per student, and that does lead to the, the higher fund balances. I don't think, from our, from our perspective, you know, we, that there is a range you want to be in, that I, I feel like we're, we're in the range we want to be now. I'm not, I don't think any of us would advocate to, to be higher, because that does mean you're holding on to funds that ultimately are taxpayer dollars. But, but, so we're, we're in a, we're in a, what I would say is a, is a comfortable range. Again, we don't want to advocate to necessarily be higher than we are now, but, but we are concerned about, about going lower and putting ourselves at risk of, of, of revenue fluctuations and, and some, some challenges there. You know, we did mention the, the, you know, the need if we were to drop below the, the recommendation that's included here, which is approximately 40 million. That brings tax and participation notes kind of into play. That's, Board Member Carubus talked through that really well, probably, probably better than I would have, but it is, it is that discussion of, you know, using a credit card to, to, to pay off another credit card sort of thing. It becomes very difficult to, to come back or dig out of that once, once you kind of go down that route. And again, there unfortunately are school districts that are examples of that. So, I don't know, Bob, if you want to add anything on?
Yeah, I'll add to a couple of those points since you, you mentioned your tier-two district, which means you don't have as much resources as a tier-three or tier-four district, but that also means you don't get funding as quickly as a tier-one district either. So you're kind of there in, in that no man's land, if you will. You do get additional funding, but not like a tier-one district would, which would, a lot of tier-one districts have been able to rebuild fund balance because they've been getting dollars probably faster than they can spend them because you can't find people to spend the money on, you're right? We have this labor shortage right now. So, a lot of tier-one districts have been able to build a higher balance than tier-two districts. The other thing to think about is the history of your district as a high-growth district. Well, you're not a high-growth district right now, you were. And so you think about a fund balance as a percentage calculation. So at one point, let's say your annual budget was $100 million, and you had $30 million of fund balance, what's a 30% number? Well, as you're growing rapidly, your budget increases as you're adding on more buildings, more employees. So this, you get to a $200 million budget. Well, if you didn't run surpluses every year during that journey, you're still sitting $30 million, well, now you have a 15% fund balance. So a high-growth district didn't just have to pass balanced budgets, it had to pass surplus budgets to grow its fund balance in a proportion to its operations, which is a very hard thing for you to do when you're not getting extra money from the state. So the fact that you're able to build up some additional fund balance and contribute to the projects is really fairly remarkable. And then, just to piggyback on the discussion about TAWs is, you know, the state measures, has these measurements in place on fund balance and, and assigning scores to the district on their, the strength of their district, but yet throughout the state, property taxes are paid on different cycles. So you can have a lot, you get out of Chicago Metro area, a lot of counties don't pay until July, so their June 30 balance is their low point. So it's giving a good picture of what the strength of their finances. You get a lot of your money in June, as had already been mentioned, so you take that same snapshot on June 30, makes you look a lot stronger than you really are. If your fiscal year in were instead May 31st, your fund balance would look a lot different. So I think all those factors, in addition to what Matt said, is, you know, hopefully addresses your question.
It does, and I just wanted to make sure, since you had done that comparison, you talk about other districts, I wanted to make sure that we, we talked about why we're where we are, and the fact, not only in the revenue, but, you know, again, we're the fourth-largest district in the state. So we're talking about a significant, a significant number of more students than many other districts are. So that also, that also comes into play. And the slide 23. Any, any ideas on, you know, we've talked about a little bit if the, if it doesn't, if we're not successful with the referendum? I don't know if there is a way to, we, on the operational reductions, we've talked about potential, what it means from, you know, an FTE standpoint. Larger class sizes, would we anticipate across the board? When we talk about that FTE reduction, do we see that across the board? Were you trying to answer that, Dr. Tally?
I'm taking a very deep breath. When I pushed for lower class sizes, grades K1 and 2, it was with a belief and a hope that after, as our money was gone, we'd be able to continue that going forward. I do believe the success we've been able to have over the last couple of years has been due in part to that reduced class sizes. Am I saying tonight, were we not to get the bond referendum, that we would go immediately to the K1, 2? I'm not saying that, but it is probably very likely. You have to understand, class size reduction at K1, 2 costs us roughly 1.5 million per year. And so there, right there is a, and that's roughly 15 FTEs. So then we also have to look at program changes as well.
You said close to 50 FTE, though, that's just 15.
I know, I said 15 of the 50. So there are other positions that we'd have to look into doing. One of the things that was said, Mr. Rising said, I believe it was Mr. Rising who said earlier, the, our central office is very thin. It was one of the things I noticed when I first came onboard. When, a baseball analogy, our bench is not deep. Those cuts back in 2008, we have never recovered. And I could start listing the positions we should have as for a district of our size that we don't have. And we've talked about where we would do these cuts, and yes, we would, we would look at central office, but there are not 45 positions in central office that we could cut. So it will be an impact to schools, it will be an impact to class sizes, it will be an impact to programs. And I don't say this lightly. I say it because it's the truth.
Thank you, Dr. Tally. My question was going to be, was getting ready to allude to any idea of the overall cost that this, that you might project, but I think I'm going to leave it with what Dr. Tally said. Thank you.
So thank you very much. It was an informative presentation. I do think that slides like slide 18 are important, especially when we talk about longevity of this plan or this strategy that we're putting forward. It's not just for us today, it's for us 20 years down the road. And to lay that out completely, you need to show things like this financial view, right? Where you're, you're telling the public, I'm going to keep it at 37 cents or 25 and a half million, this shows you how you're going to lay out that 420 million to make that a true statement. But also on top of that, we put together a very substantial facility plan with preliminary timelines for different pieces of work, which will become more developed if this program passes, and as each piece goes forward, it'll become more and more detailed. But the public is available to go look at that right now and understand what the detailed plans are for the work, for the financing, and the impacts if this doesn't, this referendum doesn't pass. And for sure, I don't think ever doing loans on fund balance would ever be anything that we would want to ever get into a position to be in. So we would definitely have to make very hard choices if this referendum does not move forward. So, thank you again for the information and for all of the groundwork to lay out all of this information for our public. So thank you, and for the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, any legislative advocacy or Board of Education update information? Nope, then I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor? All right, thank you.